Yes.
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 Well, Kyle, the word by me. Want to welcome all our guests today. Row call, Laura Cobb.
Here.
In the open.
Here.
To your hand.
Here.
Mark Truitt.
Here.
We have a corner. We call, this is our Cleveland County Communications District meeting. So we have no comments from citizens who want to ask to speak. We have no officials or board members here at the time to ask for anything. New business.
You did?
Well, I'm entertaining them. The minute, I'm sorry, approving the minutes.
I'm not personally opposed to it.
Second? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mark, you said aye.
Aye.
Everybody said it sometimes at the same time, it's hard to tell. Courts from staff. Ms. Crystal.
Okay, so November seems like so long ago, but this is, I gave you November's monthly report. So year today ending November 30th, we processed 26,000, approximately 26,000 calls. We issued several addresses, we had two freeze warnings. We did not activate the EOC, it says one, but we did not activate, so that's a zero. So just kind of briefly what we did in October and November, because we did not have a November meeting. We submitted our EMPG application, we hosted Leadership Cleveland here. Attended the communication and media class in Prattville. I also did the event Storm Spotter class. We had employees travel to Opa-locka to do an NCIC class. And Sheila and I attended the RCD meeting with Senator Price and Representative Robertson for a grant that we were awarded. And so that's been the majority, the majority of October was spent on the, or September actually, on the EMPG application, and it's pretty extensive, so we were glad to get that out of our hands. And you can see our call volume, October, we were super busy, November we dropped off a little bit, and we seemed to be, seemed to be on a track to surpass our annual call volume from last year or so. Other than that, I did want to mention, if I may, we, just kind of a Greek history, we have a hosted 911 system that we pay an annual maintenance agreement on, which previously has been $10,800. Several months ago, I told you that I applied for a state 911 grant, $200, something odd, $1,000, because our vendor recommended, instead of doing hosted, we go back to a standalone system, which was fine. So we applied for the grant, and we were notified in November, end of Oc-, end of October, November, that the cost recovery funds that the state board pulls the grants from were on hold. And they did that because something about the state examiners obviously didn't like the way the state board was handling those grant funds. But the problem lies that the state, they were going to help the districts use that to, for the cost of these new systems that they needed to put in. Long story short, we're still on hold. The state examiners is working with the ACTAs, working with the state board to get that through legislative, they decided to change some verbiage, but Ryan Public Safety is now having to charge us $27,000 a year instead of $10,000 a year. So they agreed to the districts that have such tremendous increase that they would do that on a monthly basis until, until the state board could work out the grants. And so we're kind of at our own hard place, we can't not have maintenance on it, and it has to be monitored and all of those things. So just FYI, the first one was already paid.
So if you do get the grant, that's going, of course, going to help pay it. But then when the grant's spent out, we still going to be paying $27,000?
Not if we go back to the standalone.
Okay.
This from what the, what the vendor has said. Ryan Public Safety is the vendor that does our call-taking system. So we had traveled historically with connectivity, and they placed, I think, six or eight districts on a hosted system, so we're all sharing one. They say that in the past, because we've had it for five years, they say in the past five years, Cleveland's connectivity is not as good as they want it to be, so they want us to go back to a standalone and come off of the hosted system. So we're still on the hosted system, we have to pay for that, but if it, what, if it has been historically, it will go back cheaper if we're on a standalone.
Cheaper than a 10.
How much did they got to change out when they go back to the standalone?
No, I don't know. I have no idea.
We made a good bid for the other system, right?
Well, we got that through grant funds.
I know, but it still was a good deal of money.
It was about, well, that one we got, we had the CAD, so it was like three, it was close to over $300,000.
Of course.
And that was the both together, so.
So why is it, so?
It's something about the state examiners looked at the state board, how they split the cost recovery funds or what's left over from the phone bills. And they accept applications from the districts and divvy that out for needs. Like, you know, we've got our CAD through that, we've got our new radius system through that, so they were going to use that this year for the agencies that have issues with their 911 systems. But I don't know, they didn't like how the board was doing it.
So, so we're going back to standalone and forgetting all about the other system?
If we can get, if we can get approved through that grant. We can't go back until they put the proper equipment in, so we're kind of stuck on the hosted system until we can get back and get that.
And so you're saying that would be $27,000 a year?
A year.
We're hoping we'll get nothing.
What happened to the, what happened to the equipment we had before we swapped over? Do we still have it?
I don't know. I don't know if it took it, I'm sure, so. That's what I asked.
I think Mark's got a question, I'm sorry.
How much is necessary for that work is equipment, how much is just software? Because hosted, I understand, that's your, your storage and processing is done remotely, kind of like when you have Adobe Reader, you can have it on your computer, or you can have Microsoft, you can have it on your computer, or you can have a 360.
We don't have the software here, it's at another location. So we do have the equipment, so I couldn't tell you, I have no idea.
Does it sound like that you can just put software on the existing equipment?
Sounds like it's a big deal. Well, we had some pretty, pretty heated discussions on this, because I expressed to them, it was your recommendation we go on the hosted system, we went on the hosted system, like you recommended us to, and they're one of the only vendors in the state that offers that to us. So you, you recommended this, and now you put us in a hard place, because what are we going to do? We, we have to pay, we can't, we don't have, you know, $200, something odd, $1,000 to get our equipment back to what we needed to be just for standalone. So there were several conversations we had, and I think even the state board had some pretty heated discussions with the vendor that's providing this, so.
So is everybody going to standalone and get away with it?
No. This same vendor has proposed, I spoke with Kelly from Randolph, they proposed that she go on the hosted system. So.
Is it?
It's, it's not.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it based on what, because of the system itself, where you locate it?
No, we were on with like, we were some, we were on with some counties in the Midwest, so it really doesn't matter the location, because they all go to a hub and then it's, you know, sparse out.
Because why are they not in YouTube?
Because they say Cleveland's connectivity with our internet was not good. And we, he said that we have our backup system, which is our MIBO phones, he said that they had to transfer our calls to our MIBO phones more than they would like to have done. So it's a connectivity issue. And to remedy that, they had already approved, the state board did, to put Starlink in. So we've just had Starlink recently, I guess in the past three weeks, installed, so we have Starlink as a backup to our internet.
Now, y'all have met with Parkers.
We have.
Is that not a better system? I mean, the, the?
Parker got back, and Lain and I spoke about this, Parker got back with us and it was going to be $1,500 a month, just for the Mountain Center and the Sheriff's Office, and we would share a gig of data. He said that he would have to do some more research on the courthouse to get every department under, but Lain and I didn't feel comfortable with that. The jailers themselves have one gig, and Parker's recommendation was one gig, and both of us sharing. And we had, we had explained to them that our 911 system is a standalone, we need to be standalone. We don't need to depend on anybody, we do not need to share anything just because of our firewalls and our, how much of our equipment run off of that fiber. So neither of us really felt comfortable with sharing that, so that, that's what we are.
And it was he and I acceptable about doing it and?
Oh, yeah, he, well, he said that he, he said that he could build it however we wanted to, but $1,500 is what we're paying now. And the, the idea was that he could get all the county offices on there, and anyway, so. That was the recommendation from him.
For Jason, since this company recommended this, and since it sounds to me it's not working like they proposed, is it going to work? Or do they have any liability?
I'd have to see the contract, but you never know.
Well, our file your contract is up. We signed up by your contract with him, and now?
But even if the contract's up, what they sold us?
There's a claim.
If they knew it's not going to work.
But there is a claim referred to as fraudulent inducement into a contract, but you'd have to look exactly what was proposed, and if, if it is in fact fraudulent, or if it was just simply their opinion.
Yeah. I mean, if we bought all this stuff and now it's not working like they said it was going to work, they'll at least cut us a deal or something.
I said the same thing.
Is this a system that takes the calls and reports the calls and?
It's a system that accepts the calls for the longitude and latitude and the information. Their recording is separate.
And it's all down to the internet system is what's causing a lot of this problem?
From my viewpoint, there wasn't a problem.
There's issues in it, in the internet.
Yes. There, there is, and that is the next excuse, I think, to, for us to go back to a standalone, so. But regardless if we go back to a standalone or not, we're on the hosted system right now. And that was his thing. And, you know, I told him, I said, well, he recommended we go to the standalone before all of this happened, of course, that's why I applied for the grant, and because the grant we applied for five years ago included a portion, a portion from the state funds to cover the cost of the hosted system. Part of that, we're going to have to pay the $10,800, so.
I think, Mark, did you have a question, Mark? I'm not ready to say. Go ahead, King. I heard from where in Montgomery, and I can't remember who told me this, that they're going to go back and reevaluate the payout on the phone tax, or whatever fee, or whatever their calling, so are they actually looking at, maybe we can get that bumped up to what it should be instead of this garbage number we've had probably here?
I have no idea, I know that there's talks about it. Lauren from the ACTA met with us in our breakout sessions at the legislative conference, and was talking about the cost recovery funds. So I don't know if they're going to go back to the legislature and ask for those cost recovery funds to be split differently, I didn't really get the whole gist of it, but I have heard that too, that some of the smaller counties like myself and some of the other directors have sent letters on letterhead explaining to the state board what are our issues, what are our problems with funding, and they gathered those and were going to take them. So I'm not sure where they are on that, but I have heard the same thing.
Who, who do you think we need to put pressure on? Or, or is that even possible, I mean?
I feel like it's possible, I would probably, I can send an email to Lauren with the ACTA and just ask her, who do we need to have target to, or Leah from the state board, because it's important.
Our senator and representative has got some input in?
I'm sure. I'm sure.
Okay.
So I do know that she talked more about the cost recovery funds, because they're wanting to change some verbiage on that. And those cost recovery funds, that's tremendous amount of money if they could just go back to the districts, which, you know, the state board will say, well, it does, but the grant funds. But, you know, that's how we've gotten all of our equipment, and I think any director would say they're thankful for those funds, but also, on the other hand, we have issues with staffing, and, you know, we need more staff and things that, you know, everyday things, not just the equipment purchases, so.
And that, that is taken out of your phone bill, is called recovery funds?
Yes. Well, it, all of your fees go to the state board, they're giving them out, whatever percentage that is. But there are excess, there are excess funds, and those specific funds have been historically used for grants, and those, those grant funds are the ones that the auditors showed, and they said, it cannot be used the way the board was using it, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me jump back on something, Crystal. The call volume, each year the call volume keeps going up. How much of that call volume increase is off of I-20?
Oh, I would say a huge portion of it is off of I-20.
Can we, all right, let me sit down with someone, you know, because they base our money off of, you know, the way they did it years ago, and they've never changed it. But they, somebody's got to be able to listen to us about these call volumes coming off of I-20, it was never considered before.
We, we have done everything but jump up and down in Montgomery. We, and the state board is great that they have helped push it, but our, our, our argument has always been, the previous administration did not plan for the future. And even with inflation, I mean, we've doubled and tripled what our budget was even, you know, 10 years ago. So to make these districts that didn't plan well for the future, it's, and I quite frankly said, our, our district suffers from it, because we planned on one person on shift for 24 hours. Well, we surpassed that 10 years ago. We, we needed two on shift from that point on. And so we, the answer is yes, we have told them that, we have, you know, we have said, you know, I-20 is a big headache of ours. We have, you know, our hiking trails, G-Haw, we, I mean, we used everything we could. And not just excuses, we have shopped and data.
There's also a lot of crossing from the Georgia line over down the bound, where you have to pick up calls, transfer calls as people coming through, if there's an emergency coming through, you're, you're, you're having to play both sides of the fence on that.
But I guess what I'm trying to say is, maybe can we reach out to someone and make them understand, you know, the last 10 years, what the call volume has been off of just I-20? Because that's something that, a lot of your counties don't, don't have to deal with it.
Yeah.
And we are having to deal with it, just like Oxford. But we've got to get somebody's attention to look at Cleveland County, the cause of I-20.
Well, when I first took over as director, is when we first started working on this, because immediately I sent the state director an email, and I said, this is, this is crazy. I mean, what, how, what are the steps to give us more funding? And, I mean, it's always been said that when the fees were set long ago, that they, they were told that they would not be changed again, it would have to be done legislatively. So that's been the issue, is that we get what we get. And like Terry said, of course, the talk is that they're considering that, so. Like I said, I was sending Leah and Lauren an email and saying, hey, who specifically can we talk to about this? And maybe we can help push Senator Price and Robertson.
And look at the volume, I mean, that's what we need to give them, the data to show them we can, yes, we can. But maybe the best question is who we need to hear that?
A lot of agencies now are having to do, you know, three or four years ago, districts really didn't charge dispatching fees, but there have been more and more districts having to charge dispatching fees to sustain the department. And so I think that has helped, you know, just recently, in the last five years, we've had a lot of that. I had a lot of, probably six or eight agencies, even eight, reach out to me, hey, how did you calculate your dispatching fees for your agencies that paid you? Because it is everywhere, it's not just the small ones, of course, small counties always lack, and always have to add additional, but it's the larger counties too that are saying, hey, with inflation, it, it's tough, so anyways.
You have any questions?
One. He talked about noticing some calls being rerouted to those internet glitches or whatnot. Have you noticed anything on your, from your end, glitches or switches or whatever it is?
No, it's not really rerouting, they, like I said, I have not seen an issue with it. We have a backup system in our MIBO phone, which means if our hosted system goes down, we can transfer those calls to our MIBO phones. We go on our, well, our MIBO phones are tested monthly, but we go on our MIBO phones.
Throughout the day?
Very, very rarely. Very rarely. I would say, you know, rights being centrally, whatever they're called now, if they go, if they have had issues, we've, I think I've had to roll calls twice in probably a year, so it's, I haven't seen an issue with it. I have not.
You think we might be overstating the severity of it?
I'm not really sure what, I hate to say, but Ma, don't tell me, yes. And that's what I told him, and I told, while I was talking to Randolph County, I said, I just think that's very ironic, because they originally did not recommend hosted for Randolph, but they did for us. So now it's swapped, so.
And what they've got to use for $27,000 of the fee?
Yes, ma'am. When is that going to be paid?
We've had our first payment, I think, November.
So we got to revisit your budget?
Ah, yes, eventually we will. I would say that they're very hopeful on it. Lauren felt very confident that the verbiage could be changed right quickly, but, I mean, that's just a guess. So I would say probably maybe sometime in the spring, early summer, look out at the sun, we should be able to be okay until about that point. And hopefully they will have worked something out. And the state board has assured the counties that this is effective, that they will do everything in their power to help us refit some of the money as well, so I believe that they'll do everything they can.
Any other questions? The chairman?
No, of course, sir.
Okay. The old business discussion items, guys, anything? So y'all going to pursue this with state legislators and? If, if Crystal can find us a name, then we'll talk and see what will get done, you know? John, you have anything for this side? All right. I make a motion with your. All in favor of saying aye? All right, we want to call our county commission court to order. We'll welcome everyone, Row call, Laura Cobb.
Here.
In the open. Thank you. To your hand, Mark Truitt. Always got a class clown in the group. We have a full house. Had no one to ask to speak tonight. Comments from officials, board members, sheriff, you have anything? Lain, you got anything?
Judge.
Clay, you?
You skipped the indication, please, a little.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, it's my last warning.
You're in a hurry to get out of here.
My last warning. Oh. He's afraid he's going to get tired and feathered. Yeah. Y'all, please forgive me, let's all, please, at least the flag now, say it. Salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Thank you, Father, for all your blessings, and we ask you, Father, to give us wisdom tonight as a group, anoint this county commission to help them make good choices tonight, and we just ask you, best Cleveland County, our state, and our nation, Jesus, now we pray, amen? Thank you, free. John, you want to say anything?
I'm good.
You're good. Lain, you good? Clay?
I'm good.
How about you, Tan?
Grant's all those, your last meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Top of it.
Thank you. Do you have any? Mr. Copeland with the water, he has something he wants to talk about, we need to possibly, we do need to add something to the agenda. He's going to explain the contingencies there and?
All right, I think y'all have, the first thing I'm looking at is the recommendation to award. Last CPG committee, I think we did have a project of $51,000 left in. This is to use that remaining money. We look on there, the project, $51,000, well, I'm like, doing this for a thing. It comes to 66, the water started fading, the difference, and this, this was get out, this is to run water in two roads. The recommendation to award is for y'all to award this, looking at the last line, contingent upon a DECA approval. A DECA still has a few forms they have to send, I do not see that being a problem, but that is in here, that it's based on the DECA's approval, that we run these roads. One of them being just out of town here, I'll probably, down in Hollisdale, in the Massa Dome. But if you will, if y'all decide to approve that, we'll, we'll go ahead and get moving on that once we get final paperwork, and you should write them, have the sunset copy set the second page.
I make a motion that we add this to the agenda.
Any discussion? In the second, any discussion? All in favor of adding this to the agenda?
One more thing, and doing that now gets us in the timeframe to get this done and apply for the next grant cycle. I'm going to get this through so we can reapply.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll have the resolution ready, and I can read it for you if you can get it out.
Okay, this will be F, and I'm just going to put water. Sir, was there another, you said you wanted to add another? We need to add a resolution allowing Lisa to, you need our CD with Metro Bank, I think you've determined that they're the best right right now.
Right.
So we need a resolution for that.
I make a motion that we add that to the business.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye? Motion carries. I got one more, C, CD. Go ahead. It's for recognition of the chair for his 24 years of service. Well, thank you. All right.
Just, just the motion.
I make a motion that we add this to new business.
Okay, I'll say it. Thank, all in favor of saying aye? Y'all need, y'all need to discuss that, man? What I need to discuss? DH. All right. Of course, that?
Is that an added resolution?
Yes, and he's going to, he's writing up something, turning that. All right, so as we move to build these, now, awards presentation, speed of appearance, consent agenda, look like everything was in initial?
I make a motion, accept it.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business FCC challenge. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission is invested in all the citizens of Cleveland County having access to broadband. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission understands that the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, defines broadband service as 100, what do you call it, MBPS downloads and 20 MBPS upload.
Maybe bits, I believe.
Maybe bits per second.
Maybe bits per second. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission understands that the FCC map reports broadband service available to the rural community. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission does not believe the FCC. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission does not believe the FCC accurately reflects the internet service available in the Ramberg community. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission authorizes the Department of Economic Development to file an official challenge to the FCC service map claiming broadband service in the Ramberg community.
I make a motion.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business I D, whereas Tree Blame Brand has plans to expand their factory, whereas a water tower is needed to provide additional fire suppression. Whereas the funding to build the water tower will come from a fifteen thousand dollar grant for tourism will be applied as well as funds from a DECA. Whereas the deed will be in the name of the commission, and an agreement will need to be in place between the commission and the Ramberg Water Authority for maintenance of the water tower. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to accept the deed for the new water tower and enter to an agreement with the town of Ramberg Water Authority to assume maintenance of the water tower.
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Emmett, I think you got to your first on the second.
I'd like to table this.
Okay, we have a motion to table. We have second to table it. Got to second, just tell me a little later. All right, so we have a motion and second to table this. All in favor of table and say aye? It is tabled. New business I D C, whereas President Joe Biden declared June 10th as a national holiday to be observed on June nineteenth of every year. Our June nineteenth falls on a weekend, it should be observed on the closest Friday or Monday there too. And whereas Governor Kay Ivey proclaimed June 10th as a state holiday on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and declared it as a regular state holiday in future years to align with the national holiday. And whereas the Alabama bill proposed in May two thousand twenty-four would have added June 10th as a permanent holiday, it was passed by the State House of Representatives, but it did not get a vote in the Alabama Senate. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to rescind resolution number fifty-one forty-one, moving June 10th from the Cleveland County holiday calendar, and allow county employees to have a second floating holiday annually. Got a motion? Got a second?
Ms. Copeland.
Oh, you got a second, Ms. Copeland? Any discussion?
Emily, I want, seriously, if we get it straightened out, I was talking to Lane and you about, on these local holidays, about being used. Have you got it straightened out where they know that they got the floating holiday, or whether it's being used, or how it's being, or?
Yes, as of January first, it will be on their paycheck, the same way that simply is in the vacation and comp time. All of that will be on their paycheck.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, ready? You saying?
I guess what I'm concerned about, when I was reading, it, our governor is still recognizing this, and it seems like, from what I'm reading, that she's gonna continue to recognize it. So if we change it, then we have to change it back.
Well, we should recognize it, right?
We're just doing it as a floating holiday.
If someone wants to take that day, they can just refer to it and all they can take that day.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, they'll recognize it, we're just doing it as a floating.
Right there.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and we vote. All in favor say aye? Four ayes, right?
Yes, sir. Four ayes.
Motion carries.
A little bit.
New business I D, whereas in previous years, it was established that all new landfill businesses must go through the Cleveland County Commission's approval. Whereas the former Cleveland County landfill has been a topic of discussion for conducting business. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to continue to require all new businesses to go through the commission to gain approval prior to conducting a landfill business.
I make a motion.
Second.
I think you got the second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
See, I mean, we brought this up just to make everybody aware that if they're gonna do this, they gotta go through us. So we're really not changing anything, because we've already got a resolution. So it's just for the public to recognize that, hey, there's a process.
Okay. And it?
So we have a landfill that has opened up?
We have one that's, I say it's a C and D, but the owner says he's not charging, so the DECA says that there's no plastic and no paint, that he can take it, as long as he's not charging.
What do you mean, I think you mean, hey?
Yeah.
That would be common.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, they've been out to this picture multiple times, and they said, as long as there's no paint, no plastic, and there's no money, which is hard for me to believe, but, you know? It's not.
And be aware that we do, we still cover, we had a resolution, I was many years ago, that prevents this. So we already have one in place, that you can't, they cannot open up a landfill in Cleveland County.
Unless they come and get your approval.
Correct.
Correct. And everything, everything has to come forward with this commission.
Right, correct.
On that. Yes, sir.
How much trouble would it be to find that old resolution where we can see the actual language in there? Does anybody have that?
I doubt it, and I meant to pull, but I had it at the house, because when we did this, when Georgia was doing the, trying to open up a new landfill, and we were afraid they were gonna push over here, and when we were doing the research and trying to do it, then we realized it was already in place, that you cannot have a landfill in Cleveland County.
I would like to see the language in, in the previous resolution before possibly making something contradictory with a new resolution, is that?
We can table it.
We just table it.
Table this motion and find that.
I make a motion to table it down.
I second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table. Any discussion? All in, yes, sir.
I mean, I don't wanna discuss the table and that, but there are people right now today actively trying to open up landfills in Cleveland County. I get phone calls all the time from people in Georgia, so it's, it's an easy.
All right, so we're voting on the table right here. All in favor of table this for the time being? Say aye?
Can you get that resolution, and they know what you're running?
We can find it. If we had a little bit more timeframe?
I'm just gonna go back and pull, I haven't done it yet, and I just gotta go pull my documents, and I'll, and I'll, I'll come back and consult.
It's been a while, but.
Commission clerk looked, but when you're looking for something that's in state V F form, it's sometimes it doesn't pick up, you have to have reporting exactly like it was found in that resolution, the bill will find it, so it would be a time frame.
Yeah, we're, so we're finding, trying to work this.
New business I D, whereas Commissioner Mark Truitt has expressed concerns about the safety of spraying herbicides, specifically glyphosate for weed control on rideways. Whereas the county's attorney stated that a herbicide not containing glyphosate can be used, but the alternative chemical may be more expensive. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to change this type of herbicide being used to exclude glyphosate.
I make a motion to table this, I'd like to work on the language a little bit, word.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on table? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Move me to F.
Yes, so this is, the title we have is bid award for water lines. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission solicited bids for water line extensions along county roads six forty-four and eight twenty-six, under C D B G project number C Y dash C M dash P F dash twenty dash zero zero nine. And whereas following bid tabulations by lab environmental consultants, it has been recommended to award the bid to Strain Construction Company in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, contingent upon a DECA approval. Now therefore, the Cleveland County Commission approves the recommendation and awards the bid to Strain Construction Company in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars, contingent upon a DECA approval, and also authorizes the chairman to sign the notice of award.
I make a motion.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So I can sign that tonight. You need six of those, you say?
Yeah, that's the six original.
Next is G, which concerning Metro and the, was it the cities, they believe?
I don't have that.
I don't, I don't think so, I think there was, add this to, to the agenda about awarding, part of letting.
Well, we can, we can use the resolution that was on the consent agenda, whereas Alabama Code, section eleven dash four dash forty-one, defines the requirements for selecting qualified public depository each year. And whereas the county administrator has received proposals in sufficient form to be able to determine that Metro Bank of Heffon, Alabama offers the most competitive benefits and the highest rate of interest on daily balances of certificates of deposit. Therefore, the county commission authorizes the county administrator to notify Metro Bank of the county's acceptance of the proposal and to work with Metro Bank to provide such information as needed to renew and or continue services for certificates of deposit.
I make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Motion carries. And H?
You only read it?
Sure.
Whereas Mr. Ryan Robertson has tirelessly and professionally served Cleveland County for twenty-four years in position of public judge. Whereas Mr. Robertson's commitment to public service has been an asset to Cleveland County, whereas Mr. Robertson is held to the highest regard for his quality of work and professionalism, and his contributions we greatly miss. Therefore, B, it resolves that the Cleveland County Commission expresses its deepest appreciation for the outstanding contribution made by Mr. Robertson during twenty-four years of public service and extends its best wishes.
Thank y'all, I do appreciate that.
And we got a flag.
Oh, I just take that.
Get on camera, make sure that.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor say aye?
Well, my camera's not working.
That camera right next to you.
I don't know what's going on.
He wants all in the picture.
Sure, sure.
I think it'd be nice.
Come on in here, Miss.
Where y'all gonna do that? They don't understand wherever y'all say.
This time we'll go out front, we'll run out front and just take the falls here.
It'll make you walk even further.
So that concludes all the voting, our court staff. I do want to say thank y'all for doing that. Twenty-four years, I'm very grateful, God has been merciful, and I've learned a lot, and appreciate all of you all. I know some of us have buddy heads, even Mark, we do have time to.
That's blown over here.
Yeah, but I have great respect for you, and I know that y'all love this county, and I think y'all know I do, and that's why sometimes passions run high sometimes, you know? And that's just part of this business, but.
Part of the living.
It is. And, but thank you all, appreciate it.
You enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
What board do you want to serve on?
That's the first five years, you gotta serve on all of them.
What's that board that has that, out there, well considered, they don't ever need.
Of the guys?
Yeah, the guys.
Do we have to get the check on, we talk to a thousand or something dollars? It's good to have that, you can use that gas, but in other places in the county, somebody does one of those, I mean, sewer systems like we got, you have to have that in place. It's good that you got it.
All right, court staff.
Okay.
Ms. Copeland.
Since, you know, you've all talked about how Crystal was saying that our cost of certain things were tripling, I got a call from Alan Parnell today, and he has, our underwriter is not going to do our, our property insurance any longer, and so he's shopping around for another underwriter for our insurance. He's just the only one that he's gotten to respond that they would cover us, came in at a tremendously high rate. Now he's trying to shop around and see what he else, he can find, because he only got the one. But our property and pumping collision last year was about sixty-seven to sixty-eight thousand. The price, the only price tag he's gotten so far is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Yes. Yes, and I asked, I said, what, what is causing that? And he said, it's just claims, it's all, it's all about claims. So he is still on the hunt for a better rate for us, but he also asked you all to consider whether you would be interested in updating our deductible amounts, because that would certainly change things a little bit. And I said that you would consider it, but that it could give us price differences if we're gonna go that route. Right now, our deductible is a thousand dollars, and they can bump it up to twenty-five hundred or even five thousand, if that's what we wanted to do. But then you start thinking about, you know, how much is that gonna take down your rate, whether it's worth it or not? So he is working on it. Normally, we do have, we're gonna pay for insurance by the end of this month, but if he, and he said, don't worry about that part of it, he'll take care of that part of it. So we'll sit, go from here, but he's trying diligently to find this.
So in January, we're gonna be dealing with this.
Oh, yeah, for sure. And if, I mean, really, it needs to be covered this month, which I know we're running out of months, but I just heard back from him, and he literally called while I was in Montgomery, and then I talked to him today.
And then he said you'll be all right for right now, of course?
He says it's okay for right now, but that, and this is normal, this is normal, that we can get our new quote from them, and a lot of times we don't pay until like the first AP in January, because we have to break every single bit of the information, give us the rates and everything down by department, and then we also have to split it between what's for this year and what's prepaid, because it's for calendar year, and of course, our year is not, doesn't run that way. So we have a lot of work to do just to pay that bill.
Which building is the most, we got the most claims on?
Which building?
I mean, not building.
It's not so much the buildings, to be honest with you, it's the, it's the auto bills. I believe that's the biggest part of it. We don't have a lot of claims on our buildings, you know, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of storm damages or anything like that, it's, by and large, it is, is auto claims.
Ms. Copeland.
Where are we at with checking with the ACCA on liability? You know, you were supposed to get all the information to them.
I did that.
So they have every, they have everything that we needed to get to now.
I gave them everything that they asked for. The only thing that was holding them up on giving us quotes is that they were cutting off doing any building surveys for a while, and then do their own surveys. So that was the last thing, I will follow back up with Henry Delmark on that, that he had everything else that he needed for months at that point. And there was a lot of information that we had gathered already, and he was like, I can't use that right now because we're not gonna do any more surveys. They were changing their billing cycle, and so they were cutting off all the surveys up till that point.
Yeah, the way, the way it was, was we didn't get the information to them in the beginning, when we first talked about doing the liability insurance, and then we started back on it again, and, you know, they only do, they only send someone out to do adjustment at just certain times of the year. So check with Henry, and I'll talk with Henry too, because I know he and I talked the other day and about this, and we need to make sure that we don't miss the cutoff again, that we get everything to them, where we can find out if it's gonna be cheaper from them.
We, the last time I spoke to Henry, we were six months from our end of our insurance plan at that point, so we're thinking, you know, six months, that'll give us some time to get everything together to him. Then I reached out to him, and I had the information gathered up, and I reached out to him, and he said, we're not gonna do any more surveys because we're getting ready to change, to change their timing. change their timing of how they would do their stock billing cycles. And he said, we are not going to do any more for this upcoming year.
For twenty-five?
I don't remember when that, exactly what time that was that we were talking to him. I will say it was in June, maybe last year, not past June, but previous. So we certainly could get back with him on it and find out what his timing is.
We failed to get the information to him in the beginning, all they needed to, because what they do in liability insurance part, and I said on the workman's call, not liability, but we discussed, but you have to give them, it takes them six months to get this all put together. And we never got all the information to them, so we had to start all over again. And they send the adjusters out once they receive all the information, but they only do it at certain times of the year.
So when was that original, when did that original happen? When was supposedly gathered? Because I only ever talked to Henry the one time back this, this last.
When I, when I first asked y'all to get the information to them, it was probably a few years ago when we first started and we first started talking about liability insurance and getting us under the ACCA liability insurance. So, um, but I'll reach out to Henry too and you reach out for him, find out where we at because we need to know if, if, you know, this is a big increase. If the ACCA, if it's gonna be cheaper through them, then we need to be going in that direction.
Sure, now, so I did the same thing with, um, with Alan Parnell last year. I asked him to get us some, uh, liability insurance quoted too because it's on the same tack. We need to make sure that we're not paying more than we're seeing as for our, um, liability insurance than we have to because it's over eighty thousand by itself just for liability insurance. That's liability on all of our vehicles and of course our public officials and all that. So, um, yeah, we'll, we'll cross check these and see what the best we can do. But like I said, Alan is trying, he's proactively trying to give us a better quote.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Did they say why the underwriter was dropping?
We got a letter from them, um, probably maybe a few, just a few weeks ago that said that that underwriter was no longer gonna underwrite that type of insurance any longer. So they really just were changing what group of customers they were serving, kind of the information that I said.
I'm gonna have two cars that gone working and finally bringing new cars.
And, but it, you know, but if it was somewhere else's insurance, then you got a different issue, but if it's on our insurance, then of course it does certainly make a difference whether they're not, we're willing to keep having you or increase your rate or you can't, you can't afford them anymore.
Just, I mean, were they on the deductible? Did that offset that deductible on vehicles versus the property?
Hmm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Some policies I have never. If it's a property, we could afford to go up higher with it versus vehicle.
I understand.
Because vehicle, we can't, five thousand would hurt. But on property, five thousand deductible would not hurt.
I understand. I can check with, uh, Alan about that.
Well, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, Ms. C, if, 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 live on, on the vehicle because our vehicles are, are anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand dollars anyway. You know, most of the vehicles near Parkland, Yaw's Department, so you say fifty, sixty thousand dollars, well, I mean, I don't know if it wouldn't hurt to have a five thousand dollar. On a vehicle. I mean, if it's gonna make it a big difference.
Well, those lost three, two tractors and then a month of each other. Oh, within the same month. So that's part of our claims for that year also. That was, both of those were in October of twenty-three.
Usually when you have two or three claims, like that's an equal way to start looking for a new insurance company anyway. So I've had insurance with people before and then something happened and then they go up twenty percent in my, and I got an error right as soon as I had a claim and I get through, I just move on to another insurance.
But you can have no claims for twenty years and then claim something and you either get A, drop, or B, increase to the point where you find another insurance.
Well, you know, twenty, they have an increase of twenty percent across the nation, so.
It's what you mean, twenty percent?
Twenty, B's here, twelve.
That's a hundred and fifty.
Okay. So y'all gonna talk to him and see if we get to the ACCA?
And that's all I have.
Any other questions?
Where are we at on our audit?
Uh, been working with Melissa all week. Uh, we are very, very close. It's just a couple of, like after, when we're adjusting journal entry tonight, sent her the trial balance again. She says she's plugging in the last few numbers. She said it should be done just, just any day.
Okay, and, um, so hopefully we'll get the audit scheduled. Have you got her the fixed assets and the depreciation? Did you get those to her today?
She's got fixed assets. She's got depreciation. Um, she's got our debt issue. That was the one thing she was waiting on, our debt from back then, which was our general debt. She has everything that she has asked for except for the trial balance that she just requested from me right before we went into meeting. She and I have been communicating, communicating every day about this. So I've got one more journal entry I've gotta enter and then send her any trial balance with that adjustment in it and that she should be able to plug in final numbers.
Okay, when did you get her the fixed assets and the depreciation? Okay. I mean, I talked to her and I knew she was still lacking those two things.
Yeah, I kinda had to talk her that back a couple of times because she's, she's gotten upset. She thinks that she's hearing from, I don't know who all, that I'm saying that she's receiving everything from me and I've not said that. We've actually been back and forth several times because she, I give her everything she asked for and then she turns around and she needs more information and then I have to give her more information. So that's a fluid thing. As of right this second, the only thing she's waiting for me is a trial balance after I do this journal entry. That's it.
It's just a call line is the only thing we want.
The trial balance. I have one journal entry ready and that picks the trial balance and then I'll send her copy of the trial.
So you feel like that she'll be ready to call and have them to schedule by the end of this month?
Yes, we will have a schedule in this month. She sees no reason. She told me probably maybe a week to ten days ago that she thought we were a week, or two, week to ten days out. That's what she said. It's up any minute now. It's just a matter of finalizing those last little bit of details. Um, she did want, she actually wanted to come this afternoon. She was trying to schedule this afternoon to sit down with me and go over a few more things, but I saw we had a meeting, so she's, I'll go, we'll catch up hurts in the morning this week, so.
We just want to make sure we get this behind us because this is so critical during twenty-two.
It will be done. We both, um, she and I both are finishing a tremendous amount. I would just about finish. I mean, it really is just about to just five, few, both of them to plug in.
Okay, just, you know, just remember when those officers come here, they're our base plans. We'll make sure we do as much as we possibly.
We can go then. So bring in some doughnuts or something that week.
That's a good thing. They won't let you give them anything.
Well, they'll have to give them when you're standing there in the break room. You'll smell the doughnut and I'll go buy a shit.
Just make sure that we.
Of course, the trial. Oh yeah, we, you know, we're very swanky there. I was very friendly. They're easy to work with. They don't, they're not, they don't come in acting like, they come in and ask for a lot of information and we give them the information as quickly as possible. We drop everything else in response to their questions. So, um, I fully expect that it won't be first of January. I think it'll be a little bit longer because they're working on boards right now. So I think it's gonna take them a little bit of time to schedule it, but they will be notified when they can schedule it.
This is a question for attorney administrator, but have y'all heard anything from Waste Management, one of the letter that you sent out?
Nothing.
I talked to Lee this afternoon. He said he hadn't heard anything either.
Where is it?
I feel away to the kids too.
Totally not.
Yes, sir.
So I guess we're moving on. What, what's the next step? I mean, with, with Lee sent a letter, you sent a letter, we still don't have new trash cans.
You gotta decide if you want to declare them in breach and then get ready to fight.
How many first timers on there come back a year behind?
Uh, we ain't even through the first year, are we?
Yeah, you got two full years to.
I mean, I just want new trash cans.
You don't want those. You have the Williams on?
Hey, out of my district, they still, they got trash cans from Georgia and from free garbage companies that go in and everything else. I don't see that.
All our trash guys scares all my dogs dressed up like the Grinch and Santa Claus and everything else. Stuff that they're all dressed up in. I'm like, they come down there and Kobe Billy went berserk. I said, get them boys.
We did have an issue this past week with the garbage company trying to not go down some of the dirt roads that are county roads. But Lee did explain to them that they had to go down those dirt roads. They wanted to move some of the cans up to the major roads and I had some, some of my customers call me, but Lee told them, no, you, you signed a agreement that you, you serviced these, but these are county roads.
Okay.
So what's that, what happened?
Um, did anybody talk to Lee? Did he have anything that he need?
He didn't.
He didn't inform?
He, he was actually going with Waste Management, I think mine, to look at a road because they said they didn't have room enough to turn around, even though they've been turning around there for years, so.
Maybe it's that same road. It's the people's, they've been turning around in the people's driveway and the people told them they could no longer do that because it would damage in their driveway. But just right down the road is where, um, block was, and it's a solid, they just sit down and turn around and go back out. I mean, they have a place to turn around.
Ms. Trower, anything?
All in F is, uh, I got through a first reading notes on personnel manual in November. I'm getting some notes from Emily that I'm working to incorporate those, uh, as well as the resolutions that were in the past changing it. So just trying to get everything together so that it would be one solid report.
Wouldn't you talk about some, or Terry, would you talk about something in the government that you sent in or?
If there's something that you have had come up, please email it to me and I'll incorporate it in my review.
Oh, was it on the, on the step raises? We're talking about the step raises, you know, what Joyce was picking up and then, and we did a resolution at one time and then I think Emily says that the step raise is undone that, you know, or if somebody moved from one department there, seniority moves with it.
We picked that one.
That is in the personnel manual. They, um, what it says, it said there's someone who's from one department to another department, that they go back to step A if, as long as it is a five percent increase of pay. They're not gonna go down in pay. They've got to at least have a five percent increase. But they do start, if we hire someone from nine-one-one and they go to the promet office. No, that's not right. If they take, uh, if we hire someone that's nine-one-one and they go up a step in that same apartment, then they go back to an A on that new pay grade as long as it's a five percent increase.
What we did on that was it had to be equal or greater. Did, did it actually say five percent? I don't remember.
It does say five percent. It says there has to be at least a five percent increase. So they're not gonna go down. They have to go up.
We, we also need to look at that with the nine-one-one issue since the nine-one-one employees are not county employees. They're nine-one-one board employees.
Okay.
Can, can, uh, the nine-one-one board adhere to adopt the county's policy?
Uh, it's just once it's.
Yeah, once you get it done.
Yeah.
Going back into, so, so what you're telling me, if somebody's been here twenty, fifteen years and they gonna move up to a job that's probably a tough job or, you know, if you're moving up anywhere to a more, better job, you're only talking about giving them a five percent increase to take them that much more responsibility, not give them their, their.
That's what the personnel manual says as of right now.
We need to look at that. Do you have somebody that's worked for this county that we got, that, let's just say it's in this office up here. We've got somebody sitting over here and if they move up and it's just not, you know, just a five percent, you might as well just sit over there.
But that.
Cause your step raise is what, two and a half percent?
You look at two years of service first.
No.
The way it's set up on county, you do not.
And you take, I'm just, I'm just shooting like Ryan's office. You look at the, how would that work in Ryan's office? There, from a clerk up to the, to, uh, April's job, that's a pretty good increase then.
But that's also about five pay grades apart.
Okay.
So even though they go back to an A, you have to look at what their pay is now versus what the starting pay would be then. In, in situations where it's come up that I have observed, they're getting a substantial pay increase because if the jobs that have more responsibilities actively, you put the pay study in place, their pay grades are higher.
Okay, so it's already been increased on top. Okay, I see what you're saying.
So five percent is minimal.
Yeah.
It's minimal. That's just what we. No, that's, it's not cap at five percent. It is not.
We'll still look at it. If you're gonna comment in your next back.
Absolutely, I will.
I just don't want to picture where I got somebody that didn't have frame and not take that job because we're gonna have some people in some of these locations retiring and this is gonna be tough.
Yes, sir.
Did, we talked about one town about contacted all department heads and see if they had anything they would like to change. I did, did you do that?
I have not done that yet. I'm going through all of my notes and sending those over and then I'm gonna try to still meet with everyone and get their notes on the day that they want to change. I have to ask both Joyce about this specific issue because she would like for the years of service to be considered when employees are changing jobs.
We're trying to be as comprehensive as possible without rushing it.
Any other questions?
But if they're, let me ask this now. If they're all putting what they'd like to have changed, but their changes will come back to us.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You know.
Just go on with it.
Tweet.
Yes.
Final decision rests with the commission.
Is that it?
Yes.
Old business? Any discussion items? Hey, Lainey, wish you the best and you're, you and Devin, hope that goes away. Alan and Ty, what's your two?
Make that a motion.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
We.